... Monday, March 13, 2017. As is our customer to start our meeting with the opening line of town. Thank you. Jay Fairholme.
I would like to lead the way to the flag of the United States of America and to their vote for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we have our agenda before us, if there are any amendments or additions or additions. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, public.
Second.
Remotized that once and for all, seconded by Michael Fioco, that's the case, please don't pick that thing high.
Aye.
So, opposed, immediate, that's the motion carried. I'd like to thank Michael Fioco for taking over responsibilities of the Economic Development Board, and sure he'll enjoy the meetings as much as I have.
Okay.
And that's for the period of time until...
Till he recovers.
Well, I was going to say until the end of term, if you don't mind. We have public expression speaker tonight. Kathy Mabel. Good evening, Kathy. Kathy Mabel, I'm with Julian Lane, and I was here at the last meeting to get some information about pending development off Thompson Street that will parallel Julian Lane and then curve behind Julian Lane and the Davis Academy. I did hear back from Director Jones, Plan Director Jones, he got some more, I think a better understanding of what the process is and how things work, but of course it's still not 100%. I sent Mayor Perry, I hope you got my email, and that email, Plan Director Jones, with some comments about the construction of Collector Road A, which will run from Thompson Street and curve behind Julian Lane, I assume to eventually connect to Davis Academy. I'm really not sure about that, but that's my assumption. The Academy will be behind Collector Road A. My concern, and then just concern of some of my neighbors, of course, is going to be living through the construction of the road, it's going to be a lot of trees that are going to have to be cut, obviously, very concerned about the noise, dust, presumably construction will extend into the summer. So, I had emailed and requested email Mayor Perry and Plan Director Jones, and asked that whether it's the board or the planning director, I'm really not sure again how this works, but that it request indeed to Chatham Park to build a berm that will parallel Collector Road A, which essentially parallels Julian Lane and then curves behind Julian Lane, that would reduce the noise of construction, and hopefully that would also mitigate some of the dust that's going to be disturbing that roadway for a very, very, very long time. Eventually, houses are going to be built, some sort of housing will be built on Collector Road A. Obviously, may not have the maps in front of you, but Collector Road A is the one that runs off Thompson Street that will eventually reach Fire Tower Road, and then presumably lead to Davis Academy. So, it encompasses 50% of Julian Lane. Plan Director Jones said that because the, this is a use-by-wright development, he wasn't sure that the board or the town of Pittsburgh had the power to request that Chatham Park build a berm. I would ask that you advocate for them. I'm not sure how the law works, but if nothing else, I would hope there to be a request that would at least make life on Julian Lane taller while hundreds of trees are being felled, bulldozers, back-end loaders, you know, you all know what this is going to entail. I agree, Chatham Park is going forward, and I think in the long run, it's going to be a really good thing for the town of Pittsburgh, there's no doubt about it. But I know that Chatham Park has always said they want to be good neighbors, they want to work with the local people to the degree that's possible, and I would hope that the request for construction of a berm would be a relatively minor request for consideration of recurrent residents on the road. I took a look briefly, Federal Department of Transportation, the Federal Highway Administration website, it's a pretty easy thing to find, says that noise can be mitigated by as much as 50% if a berm is constructed, pretty easy information to get. Obviously, hundreds of tons of dirt are going to be moved as this road is construction, excuse me, constructed, and I'm hoping a little bit of it can be pushed over to the right to help keep the current very quiet, family-friendly atmosphere of Julian Lane intact. I'll be happy to go ahead and forward emails to all of you on the board, so you'll be familiar with the information that I presented, I included a PDF, make it to Mayor Perry, so you know the area that I'm talking about. And I'm sorry, can't stay for the rest of me, I've got a prior commitment, a planned retirement party for a friend, and it's at my house, so I have to get back. But I really appreciate it, and I really hope that you'll consider this, this is going to be a really tough thing to live through, and anything that could make it more pleasant for all of us would be much appreciated. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Kathy.
You'll all get an email from me in the next day or two.
Thank you, Kathy. Of course, in our relationship with Chatham Park, we meet, it's informal on many occasions, and we'll be certainly bringing this up, so hopefully a more formal request, be not immediate, but we'll work our way through that.
Okay, well, thank you so much, I appreciate the time, and I know you appreciate me keeping it short, I should have brought the candy.
Your part is that I'll try to take next time.
Yeah, I'll do that. It's okay, it's so transportable. Thank you.
Kathy was the only one that had signed up for public expression, is there anyone else who did not sign up that would like to speak? Under mayor update, several of us attended the planning board meeting last Monday, and the new appointments that were made to the planning board were definitely needed, because without them, there would not have been a quorum, and so it was very nice to see both new appointments coming in and working hard on the agenda. I think almost all of us attended the Main Street DRT circle discussion on the 28th of January. I attended the additional elements, it's the next to the last additional elements meeting for the Citizens Committee, and distributed to them thank, letters of thanks from the board and from the town for their diligent work. On the 7th of March, I met with Congressman Walker's office regarding the Pittsburgh Business Association and possible downtown grants. The man Rudy Alivo was very helpful and has followed up with some information on grant work that he thought might interest us. And over the weekend, three of us from the board here attended the racial equity workshop at the Presbyterian Church here in Pittsburgh, and it was a, it was a very fruitful and very good meeting and work session, and I think it felt that all with respect to our work together, so. Are there other meetings that the commissioners would like to report on, that they have been attending?
I'm going to be attending Habitat Humanities, having a ceremony on Thursday, and I would be leaving key to their homes if they have a busy Saturday property.
You're there too?
Are you on there? Are you ready? Okay.
Is that South of Town's lobby sprung or...
I had attended the Triangle J Council Governance meeting, and I, we talked about affordable housing, I have a handout that I'm going to make copies, it was about affordable housing in ATES, and I'm going to give that to each one of us, to our managers as well. And also, I did request that they give us review of rather of information regarding each city or county that's in the Triangle J in reference to their affordable housing policy, so they're going to compile that and provide it to us, so we can look at that. And then now, on the 16th of this month, I have a Chatham County Affordable Housing Committee meeting from 7:00 to 9:00 at the Dunlap Plaza in Pittsburgh, so that will be discussing affordable rental housing, but also I will provide more information, median additional information, and actually, the public is invited to that meeting, it's not a closing.
I can give an update on the Climate Change Committee, the Chatham County Climate Change Committee has continued to, and I haven't been giving updates because there hasn't been a whole lot of substance to share, there have been two documents that have been worked hard extensively, and those are now, one is complete and the other one is near completion. The first is an emissions, what should I call this, it's an emissions baseline report, it's basically a report on what Chatham County's emissions of greenhouse gases are in recent years, and that was done with assistance from UNC, students at UNC. The other report is on the role that farms and forests can play in helping to heal the climate, if you will, helping to absorb carbon, and that's a set of recommendations, that's in final draft and should be completed the next meeting. On the emissions reduction front, because there are some recommendations in that emissions reduction report, I wanted to call to the board's attention, I believe all of us, if not all of us, some of us have been invited to participate in interviews, because there are researchers from UNC who are wanting to do social science, apply social science by interviewing community leaders on their reactions to these ideas before and recommendations. So, Diana Hale has emailed a few of us, maybe not all of us, I think she was trying to be judicious about people who are really very committed, or overcommitted, people that have a lot on their plates, and if you can respond to her, that would be good, just to schedule an interview with Dr. Boo Buggs Raula De, which is out of France. And finally, the Chatham County and the Abundance Foundation, Pittsburgh nonprofit organization, are collaborating to host a conference on climate change in agriculture, the date's escaped me, but it will be coming forward, you'll see some announcements about that. And that's to be hosted at the new ag conference center, and actually, I've been invited to give a presentation on the farm and forestry recommendations, so I'll be speaking twice at that conference. That wraps it up. Thank you. You mentioned the Main Street and the downtown vision plan, circle improvements meeting, I thought it went well. The Main Street program, still looking for volunteers, so anybody interested, please sign up. Mayor and I attended the PBA meeting last week, and EDC did presentation to the PBA, and that pretty much took up the entire meeting, but, so.
All right. That moves into old business, the first matter for consideration is receiving the update on the County Comprehensive Plan. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Good evening, my name is Jason Sullivan, and I serve as the Planning Director for the county. I appreciate you taking time on your agenda tonight for me to present an update on the county's comprehensive plan. That's a 25-year vision for the county that we've been working on for a little over a year, we hire a consulting firm out of Charlotte called Land Designs, they've been working diligently with the Steering Committee that was formed last year as well. We actually have our Steering Committee Chair with us tonight, Jim Elsa, he's also in attendance. So I wanted to spend some time going through a presentation just to bring you up today on some of the background information, and then also where we are in the process at this point. It's not yet done, so this is not a presentation or final draft, it's kind of, we're not, we're beyond the mid-approach, just bringing you up to speed on where we are as far as the recommendations. So this is an outline, general outline of the planning process and where we are, so we started back in January of last year. The first part of it, we actually started out with a series of stakeholder meetings that involved a number of representatives from the communities, including representatives from all the municipalities, who were looking at utilities, plans, jurisdictions, admin of the county as well, and looking at how they're going to fit into our process moving forward. Moving into the second phase of the development, we actually had a series of community meetings in June of last year where we solicited input from residents in the community to get their response on the direction that they wanted to seem to plan moving forward. And then moving into this third, the third stage, was really developing the concepts that will guide the plan moving forward, so that's been the work of the Steering Committee for the better part of the planning process. And now we're shifting into this latter phase where we're really refining the concepts before the consultant finalizes the draft plan. So the reason why we're doing this, a number of different reasons, but one of them is growth that's occurring in the county. This is an outline of two projections, so the lower projection, that 98,000 projection is from the Office of State Management and Budget. The higher value, that 128,000, actually represents a projection that the consultant developed, and incorporates in largely Chatham Park and about a 50% build-out. So you can see there's a pretty significant change in the population of the county when you start factoring in the growth that's predicted to current county. From 2000 to 2015, we were like, we were second fastest growing county in the state, one of the top 100 fastest growing counties in the nation in the same timeframe. This is a map that shows building permits, a dot map of building permits over time, and the red dots reflect the building permits issued from 2011 to 2015, so you can start to see, we're starting to see pockets of growth occurring rapidly in the county, you've got the northeastern core of Pittsburgh, and then from the county standpoint, we've got developments that are starting to creep over on the west side of the Hall River along the Old Highway 87, Old 87 corridor. One of the things that also has occurred, and been occurring since 2000, is the number of new building permits issued within a quarter of a mile of voluntary ag districts. So we're starting to see, since 2000, about 628 new dwelling permits, building permits issued within a quarter of a mile of these VADs, so we're starting to see where this residential growth pressure is starting to interact with our existing agricultural operations in the county. So another reason why we're starting to see a need for a comprehensive plan. Another issue we're seeing in the county, if you look at median income, pretty significant changes throughout the county when you start looking at median, median income, and really inequalities in the county, so we're striving for a better balance in the jobs and housing as well as economic diversity in the county. You can see in this, on this slide, another issue of economic development, the large outcommuting that occurs in the county, so almost 21,000 residents a day are commuting out of the county for their jobs, with about 5,000 living and working in the county, so we want to see a change in that as far as economic development is concerned. Another concern in the county, when you look at our tax base, we're largely residential tax base, so I don't know that that's necessarily sustainable long-term moving forward, particularly with the growth pressure we're seeing in the county from residential development, so we want to see some changes particularly in that percentage of the commercial and industrial tax base and helping to offset some of the residential tax base. We also have sales tax leakage issues, so about 58% of our sales tax is actually received outside of Chatham County, so which represents about $207 million in total investment in the county from purchasing that we're losing. Agriculture, again, is another item of concern that we're focusing on in the comprehensive plan, so we have about 112,000 acres of property that's in land use, either forestry or farming in the county, so agriculture is a huge economic engine in the county, and that's something that with the residential growth that we're seeing, was ranked as one of the highest concerns from the agricultural community from an act survey that we conducted in the latter part of last year as part of this effort. Natural resources and open space protection is another item that we're focusing on in the plan, so Chatham County is kind of the green heart of the region, so we've got Jordan Lake and a majority of the core property in Jordan Lake within Chatham County, so almost 47,000 acres of property is owned by the core engineers associated with Jordan Lake, so we have a huge green footprint just from that alone. We also have the Deep River, Hall River, and Rocky Rivers in Chatham County, we've got Pickford Shiner Habitat, which is a unique feature in the county, and there are some tourism benefits that we derive from that, so trying to find a balance as we move forward with the developments occurring to protect these natural resources and open spaces in the county. Infrastructure, also a big issue in the county, we're seeing development pressures that are occurring from largely from developments, or from growth that's occurring in the RTPs or Orange County and Wake Counties, but we also have Chatham Park, this has been approved in Chatham County, it's going to be a huge, a huge driver of development in the county moving forward, so making sure that we have adequate infrastructure in place to address the needs that are going to be coming forward with all the growth that's anticipated in the county. So when looking at infrastructure, we're also not just focusing on water and sewer, broadband is an ongoing concern that we are continuing to hear more about, our hands are kind of tied at the level of what we can do as far as provision of service, but our MIS department has taken a lead in trying to identify areas in the county where we have deficiencies and trying to get input from residents to use that as a catalyst to try to encourage the service providers to increase and improve coverage in the county. Another factor that we're looking at is the aging population, so about 21% of residents in the county are over 65, we also were slightly above the national and state average median age, so in Chatham County, our average age is about 45 and a half years, years old, whereas the North Carolina average is in the high 30s, 38, 39 years old. When you look at the 1551 corridor, we had a special focus area, about 20 square miles north of the Hall River up to the Orange County line, and it becomes even more pronounced where the median age is 50.6 years old. So trying to address, one, that we have an aging population that has differing needs, but also looking at what are the things that we can change in our community moving forward to try to encourage and incentivize the kids that are growing up here to stay here in the county. So we've done some outreach of the high schools, we actually started that last week, and it's kind of interesting, kind of an informal poll of the students in the classroom saying, you know, how many of you want to stay in the county? And very, very few of them, in really long-term, look at Chatham County as a place where they want to live moving forward. Housing, and really lack of affordable housing, that's already been brought up tonight from the Mega Pro Tem, that's also an issue of concern, and I know that you're already involved in a committee with the county, looking at affordable rentals, but we're also looking at affordable home ownership, as well as emergency transitional housing, which are topics that the commissioners have identified, and working with municipalities is going to be key in moving this particular item forward. Health is also one of the main topics, or one of our primary topics in the plan, we've been working with our health department, they've been gracious in getting grant funding to help supplement this particular aspect of the plan. But one of the things we're looking at, really, and one of the focuses of the health department, is obesity reduction in the county, so one of the things we'll be looking at is looking at our development patterns in the county and trying to figure out ways that we can incentivize developers to provide a product that is more walkable, that provides different options for jobs, housing balance moving forward as well. So over the course of the year, the past year or so, the Steering Committee has been working to develop a draft set of goals, so this is a draft set of 10 goals that have been identified by the Steering Committee that have been driving this process for the comprehensive plan moving forward. One of the things the consultant had done at the outset, and I mentioned this earlier, was an evaluation of all the existing plans in the county, and there are well over 100 goals that were identified through that process, so one of the things the consultant wanted to do was to come up with a more manageable set of goals that we could use moving forward, and to try to distill from those 100-plus goals that we had, something that is, again, more manageable moving forward, that's easier to digest. So this is the draft set of goals that was developed, and that's what, again, is what's driving the process moving forward. So this is a copy of a draft future land use map that the consultant has been working on, so this, again, is derived from community input, there was also a series of GIS data-driven analyses. So some highlights to look at on the map, one of the things we're looking at is not changing, trying to make recommendations on the municipality's land use plans, but one of the key elements of the comprehensive plan is trying to encourage development to move to the municipalities as much as possible where we have the infrastructure. One, from an economic development standpoint, that's in line with the conceptual land use strategy that the Economic Development Corporation developed about three years ago that was ultimately adopted by the board of commissioners, but also looking at different issues of residential growth, looking at where the infrastructure exists or will exist in municipalities, looking at issues of affordable housing, so trying to work with the municipalities moving forward with those issues. Some other areas or highlights, looking at the western part of the county, is looking at this area where we have a lot of the agricultural operations, and looking at ways that we might be able to develop regulations to help maintain the, this large assemblage of agriculture in the western part of the county, and trying to alleviate development pressures from moving into those parts of the county. And we'll be presenting to the Agricultural Advisory Board tomorrow, actually, to get some feedback, additional feedback from them about what they would like to see, particularly with the county. So moving forward with draft goals, the draft land use plan, we're going to really start driving into, what is this going to look like, where are our implementation steps going to look like? So from the goals, we've been moving into broad recommendations on topic areas, so some of the items we'll be looking at, preserving the rural character and lifestyle of the county, what is that going to look like moving forward? It's fine to say that we want to preserve these features in the county, but how are we going to actually achieve that? So once the comprehensive plan is completed, we'll be looking at a series of changes to our land use regulations on the county side, so we'll be, we'll be seeking funding from the commissioners to develop the unified development ordinance, and we'll be looking at different ways of trying to implement, implement the recommendations in the plan. So one of the things that we've been looking at is actually adding flexibility to our zoning regulations, particularly in the western part of the county, if we want to preserve agriculture, what we've heard from the ag community is we need to have more, they need to have more flexibility for their secondary businesses, so we may be looking at some performance-based standards for business operations where administratively, we may be able to deal with those internally and avoid having somebody go through a lengthy rezoning process. Diversifying the tax base, which I touched on earlier, is a big piece of the plan moving forward, so one, looking at the mega sites, but also looking at supporting our existing businesses, and also supporting small businesses and entrepreneurship in the county as well, so we'll be looking at those, looking at recommendations, trying to figure out how to make, develop a blend of strategies, and to be able to target all ranges and all levels of business activities in the county. Again, touching on agriculture, preserving and protecting agriculture, so we'll be looking at a range of recommendations, to look at different development types that might work better in an agricultural environment. Right now, we have kind of a standard set of options that are available for developers, but we may be looking to get some options to, in the agricultural areas, where either you can concentrate development density on a project, or and also possibly looking at buffers adjacent to agricultural operations for better protection of those operations moving forward. Conservating natural resources, another topic area in the plan, we currently have conservation subdivision guidelines as an option in our regulations, we had two developers who had chosen that route, we actually had one of those developments that's currently underway and under construction, but reevaluating this conservation design standards to see... But reevaluating this conservation design standards to see where there are deficiencies and where improvements can be made so that we can try to continue to incentivize developers to want to use that option, particularly in areas of the county that have higher preservation value from a conservation standpoint. Fostering a healthy community. Again, the health department has a keen interest, particularly in obesity prevention, but also in incentivizing and encouraging access to healthcare and mental health facilities. So we're looking at different options that we can include in the plan to help address those issues as well. And then for housing policy recommendations, this is one that is a really difficult area to tackle. So if any of you have worked on the housing component in length, it really is a very difficult task to try to address. So we're looking at different options to try to, one, encourage as much affordable housing to be constructed by the private sector, which may mean different options that we may have to allow through our regulations, either through density bonuses or different options where we can work with developers to provide the flexibility for them to build and put in areas of the county where we need it. And that last one, partnerships, and particularly partnering with the municipalities, which is already underway. Transportation is another element that we are working on in the comprehensive plan. So the consultant has a subconsultant, DHB, that has evaluated the transportation infrastructure in the county. So they're looking at different recommendations. A lot of this is building on the planning processes that the county is already involved with as well as the municipalities, either through our metropolitan planning organization or the federal area rural planning organization. Facility improvements on the county side, looking at different options for side roads along 1551 Warren where there might be opportunities for that as development encourages or occurs, and also looking at improvements on some of the existing substandard roads or roads that have narrow lane widths. Resiliency is also another topic in the plan. So this is an area that kind of means different things to different folks, but one of the things we're looking at is trying to figure out, one, from a financial resiliency, we can't do everything for everybody in the plan, but trying to identify the key things that we really need to tackle in the plan and making sure we have the funds in place, but also that it's not favorable burdensome. Some other things, protecting water quality and ecosystem services. So looking at the benefits that we have from the natural resources in the county, figuring out ways that we can protect those and protect the benefits that we receive from those. So next steps, actually, February, we had a series, second round of community meetings to receive input from the community. We had a survey that was part of that. All of that information is available on the ChathamChathamWet.com website. So if you know folks who might be interested in participating, all of that information is online. The survey is also available online. That'll be until March 24th. So we would encourage you to visit that website and to take some time to go to the survey. As a board, if you have any comments or questions, we'd be happy receiving that information if you're with or David Bryan, we'd be happy to get that information as well. So I'll put it up at this point for any questions you might have. There's a lot to cover and kind of broad topics, but there's a lot of detail behind all that information spread over the past year.
Is there a deadline for the survey?
So the survey is up until March 24th.
Jason, I know we have instituted an exchange between the county and the town, and George Lucier attended a planning board meeting, I believe it was his past time, and we have a representative coming to your meeting and look forward to that kind of exchange. So that was wonderful to see coming onboard. The sales tax leak, I remember when you made the presentation at the EDC meeting, and is it so simplified to say that if people put the four-digit zip code on the end of their zip code that that will ameliorate some of the problems?
Some of it, but not all of it. I think we, just lack of places to buy things in the county really is an issue. I know that at one point, yeah, the county has been pushing, particularly with the home builders, when they're buying their products to give that four-digit zip code, but I don't know that it works that way when you go to Target in Durham. They don't ask you what your zip code is. So I think in some instances, we just don't have an option to say, I want my sales tax to go back to the community where I live. I think it works. I think it works in some situations, but definitely not all of them.
For online purchasing, it certainly would.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Well, I recognize that this seems to be very consistent with the plan developed, I think it was three years ago, by EDC, and that certainly resonated with me at the end and it resonates with me now about clustering density where you've got utilities in the municipalities as a way to preserve the agricultural and open spaces. So I see this plan heading that way as well. I did just have one comment on the goals. The ninth goal says provide affordable access to high-quality education and the many objectives, four objectives listed, none of them listed constructing new facilities, which I would have thought would be a pretty prominent goal. And so I just offer that as a suggestion to conclude.
It's great to see the municipalities in the county all working together. It's really refreshing.
Any other questions in the board?
Yeah. On the transportation recommendations, upgrades to North Carolina 87 is one that I've been wondering about and thinking about. I gathered, I'm not going to recall this precisely, Jason, somebody's helping through this, as you recall it, or Mr. Jones, that DOT has a prioritization schedule or some means of prioritizing, and that there were quite a lot of projects ahead of upgrading and widening of 87. Does this tentative recommendation change that prioritization for the county?
It won't change the prioritization, I think, through the DOT process, but it will, wherever we can emphasize improvements, particularly in some of the roads like Highway 87, certainly helps to have that reinforced moving forward. One of the issues on Highway 87 is right-of-way, so there are severe right-of-way issues. The probability is that they have additional funds that they will tackle a little piece at a time. So that's why you're seeing someone's piece of the road. That's just the best mechanism they have in place to start making improvements now. And so I don't know that this is going to move it that far up ahead of the process, but it will keep reinforcing that that is a road of concern for the county for sure, that we would like to see improvements as much as possible.
I think that I had heard that it was a concern of the Pittsburgh Emergencies Business Association as well, and it seems especially timely now that we're grappling with the kind of imminent changes to the circle, improvements to the town sort of courthouse circle and the inevitable detour that go along with that. I think that I have asked, can we make that a permanent detour? And the answer is, in the 87, it's to officially widen before we can make that a detour or truck route. So anything that we can do to actually try to change that prioritization, I think would make a lot of sense. It will probably decrease in its, on 1551, for us, create this hand for the road. And I think it's not just town residents, but county residents who would also like to see a few trucks going through the town circle.
Jim Elza, you probably know that all the 3M trucks from the quarry go through the circle, and the 87 bypass would be a perfect thing. I would, you know, going through the circle is not perfect at all, but I would almost hope the 87 bypass goes ahead of the circle in order to get that traffic away.
That's what I said.
That's all I can say.
And that's when I learned that this prioritization had been planned before the traffic circle had been even conceived.
I mean, how many years about having like the bypass around town? So is that what the thinking is now that 87 is going to be that bypass? Are they still considering the western move around?
Yeah, so this is just talking about improvements to Highway 87. They didn't need the existing, so it's not saying that this is.
We don't have the latest of that. Someone asked the, the question, they said, what's the latest for the bypass? It just went.
I don't think there's anything definitive on that particular project. Trying to get projects that score well in the new DOT prioritization process is a challenge. So the DOT has switched to this mathematical computational-based evaluation and analysis, and it's really difficult to get projects that score well. So DOT is always working to, one, work with RPO to get projects that we know that score well to try to get them into prioritization. So that's why the DOT, when they can, they're looking at what are alternatives to like an 87, so they can start making improvements knowing that they can't make all of them at one time. But maps like this and then like with the comprehensive plan, it certainly continues to just reinforce these are some of the priorities for the county and for all of county residents.
Any questions in the board?
Can you elaborate a little bit on transit system upgrades?
So that's one that's a little bit more generic for a long-range, from a long-range planning perspective. So that's not looking at that in the first one to three years. So for the transit, it's just continuing to work with Chatham Transit and then look for opportunities for them to be able to improve service, particularly as development continues in the county. And like in Pittsburgh, looking at different options for transit provision, Chatham Park roads and its own developments continue in the county. So that's one that's, although it's going to be a little bit weak on details because it's going to be thrown around in the planning process. But we don't, one of the things is we don't want that to be forgotten, though, in our planning process, particularly if grant opportunities come up or Chatham Transit in particular, if they need some support. We want to make sure that's included in the plan so they can have that as background information for them to help supplement whatever requests they may have coming forward.
Thank you so much, Jason.
All right. Thank you.
Next item, Madam Mayor, and it occurs to me that perhaps we did not approve the agenda. We approved the consent agenda, but we did not approve the regular agenda. Thank you, Jim Elza. So is there a motion to approve the regular agenda?
No, no.
Second.
Move by Chairman Hall, seconded by John Donnitt. Those in favor, please indicate by sending aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, pass as you deny. Next is the Sanford wastewater treatment capacity reservation agreement. Paul Messick will guide us through the aspects of that.
As indicated, and the members of the board, you all adopted this contract back in February. Sanford did not agree to accept the date which was inserted in Exhibit C. It was a date that was relevant in terms of calculation of the wastewater capacity charge. You had indicated May 1 of 2019. Sanford adopted this contract on the 6th of March with the date changed to May 1, 2018. Otherwise, this is the same agreement that you all had considered many times and approved last month.
Any questions for Mr. Smith?
Yes, Mr. Messick, can you please remind us of the estimated financial implications in this case?
I'm not sure exactly. The only information I had was from the Davenport folks who had obtained information from Sanford as far as their debt service was considered. And just to preface that, Exhibit C talks about calculation of the capacity charge, and it's calculated at 2/12 or 16.67% of whatever Sanford's principal balance is for their long-term bond debt related to their reclamation facility. So obviously, as they pay down their bond debt, the number changes, but the amount of the capacity charge was calculated to be either at the earlier of one of these three dates. One was the closing of the clean water revolving fund loan that the town has a commitment for, and in the event that that did not materialize, then closing of some sort of alternative financing. And because Sanford wanted some kind of finite date for those, either of those events, they had suggested that a date certainly be inserted in the option there. So we've gone from January 1, 2018, to January 1, 2019, and now back to May 1, 2018. So whatever the date is, either the closing of the loan or the alternative financing or some definite specific date, the calculation can be made for the bond indebtedness. I'm not sure, I don't remember exactly when Sanford pays its debt, whether it's done once a year or semi-annually, but the total amount appears to change significantly from one year to the other because, you know, it's talking about millions of dollars worth of debt, but it's my understanding that it's about $300,000 or $400,000 per year as the principal is paid down. So obviously, pushing the date out further, as we discussed back last month, means less capacity charge than having a date per.
Are there further questions for Paul Messick?
I would just also repeat that the estimate that we had received from the Wooton Company, which are the engineers for the town, had indicated a May 1, 2018 date as a
It was a date that was relevant in terms of calculation of the wastewater capacity charge. You had indicated May one of two thousand and nineteen. Sanford adopted this contract on the sixth of March with the date changed to May one two thousand and eighteen. Otherwise, this is the same agreement that you all had considered many times and approved last month.
Any questions for Mr. Fierco?
Yes, Mr. Messick, can you please remind us of the estimated financial implications for this DITX?
I'm not sure exactly. The only information I had was from the Davenport folks who had obtained information from Sanford as far as their debt service was considered. And just to preface that, Exhibit C talks about calculation of the capacity charge and it's calculated at two twelfths or sixteen point six seven percent of whatever Sanford's principal balance is for their long-term bond debt related to their reclamation facility. So obviously, as they pay down their bond debt, the number changes. But the amount of the capacity charge was calculated to be either at the earlier of one of these three dates. One was the closing of the Clean Water Revolving Fund loan that the town has a commitment for. And in the event that that did not materialize, then closing of some sort of alternative financing. And because Sanford wanted some kind of finite date for those, either of those events, they had suggested that a date certain be inserted in the option there. So we've gone from January one, two thousand and eighteen, to January one, two thousand and nineteen, and now back to May one, two thousand and eighteen. So whatever the date is, either the closing of the loan or the alternative financing or some definite specific date, the calculation can be made for the bond indebtedness. I'm not sure, I don't remember exactly when Sanford pays its debt, whether it's done once a year or semi-annually, but the total amount appears to change significantly from one year to the other because, you know, it's talking about millions of dollars worth of debt. But it's my understanding that it's about three or four hundred thousand dollars per year as the principal is paid down. So obviously, pushing the date out further, as we discussed back last month, means less capacity charge than having a date per.
Are there further questions for Paul Messick?
I would just also repeat that the estimate that we had received from the Wooten Company, which are the engineers for the town, had indicated a May one, two thousand and eighteen date as a likely target date for the closing of the loan. So at least May one is consistent with that estimate that the engineers had made.
I know we had some delay in getting it all rolling, but do we still think that that date is a reasonable target?
Yes, but just for the record, and just a minor, I think we all mean the same thing. Closing of the loan is something that would actually happen following construction and you're in operations when, according to the revolving loan process, the loan would actually be closed. I think what we want to make sure that we're talking about is approval of the loan from LPC, which I know that's what Paul meant.
Which basically is a commitment to the loan.
Yeah. So and that was the date, that was the schedule that was outlined by Wooten. That schedule was approved by the revolving fund folks with DWI. And at this point in time, it seems orderly that we can hit that. If there's back and forth exceeding, I don't know, I don't mean be guessing, but at some point in time, we're gonna come up against that limit, obviously. That would be my only caution.
Basically, we're making an investment and getting reimbursement. And so will that reimbursement be occurring prior to closing of the loan?
I'm not sure. Reimbursement?
When I'm going to close the loan, is when I get the money.
We don't get the money when we close the loan. We seek reimbursement from the state for expenses.
And as we go through construction. So let's say we're doing a mortgage withdrawal.
Yeah, okay. I mean, there's steps in there, but pretty much, yeah.
But you would be reimbursed for the money that you've spent before that, like for the engineers.
That's what I, that's what I heard. And during, well, and during construction, you'd be spending money.
Right.
For the first on a regular basis.
Any thoughts? Question?
Mr. Fierco, you had really, my recollection is that you, among all of us, had soaked your head most deeply in this particular detail. So I'm wondering if you would be willing to share what's on your mind.
My preference is clearly the later date. But my preference is also to solve a longstanding problem that we had. The potential of disagreement far exceeds seven months. So I'm comfortable to give that date as much as I would like to give. January one doesn't make me uncomfortable with the date. Based on our engineers' analysis, that they can still hit the mark of any date. Do I appreciate that?
Is there a motion or further questions?
So moved.
Move by Michael Fierco, seconded by Pamela Baldwin, to approve May one, two thousand and eighteen as the date for Section Three of Exhibit C, the Sanford Forest lot, the Forest name agreement. Those in favor, please indicate by sending aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. Fred Roy, Traffic Impact Analysis Transportation Engineering Firm selection.
It's Malton. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Board. Before you, is a memorandum recommending three transportation engineering firms who have been vetted by staff to assist the town in a variety of transportation engineering needs. The first use or need is I have a stack of transportation impact analysis on my shelf that need to be reviewed from previous submittals of site plans that generate more traffic than we currently have. And I, although I have some transportation background, I clearly recommend we hire some firms. Moving forward, we have significant issues tonight. Tonight, some of them were mentioned. These firms not only can do traffic impact analysis review, but they can help us with intersection and road cross-section design review to see if the road width and the intersections that these new traffic loadings will meet. And if we have to talk to DOT, they can raise the flag with us early about intersections. They're all experienced with model verification, the digital models, that traffic generation with modeling. They can help us with DOT issues, with state road issues that we've mentioned, like eighty-seven bypass, if we desire to have them assist us with that. They can help us with pedestrian multimodal issues, transit, bikes, pedestrian issues related to that, if we desire. They can help us with transit planning. They can help us with parking issues. So as you can see, we have a lot of issues coming up related to transportation, specifically related to Chatham Park. We had a request for qualifications issued. I don't remember the date, but we received seven highly qualified submittals. And I reviewed them carefully and I recommended three to the manager. The three fit best because generally, they have direct experience in Pittsburgh with DOT modeling, with major roadway future modeling with eighty-seven, fifteen five oh one, sixty-four east-west, with staff that have direct experience in those models or actually did the work. And, or they have extensive municipal traffic impact assessment experience working for other similar municipalities. Those are sort of my metrics. They're all in Raleigh. They're all eager to get to work. They all have plenty of staff, plenty of bench, plenty of technology to help us in any way that we desire. So that's the staff recommendation for you tonight. Thank you.
Would you consider your work with these bricks being extreme vending or just regular?
Regular.
Are there questions from the board?
I have one. Fred, is it necessary to hire three of these engineering firms for this? I don't, I mean, this is new to me on this transportation firm. Do we need three firms on call?
It was, I was requested to hire three, and so I did, or I'm recommending three. You know, it is not absolutely necessary to answer your question. They would each be on, well, they would each be on call for task orders, so none of them would be paying a penny until we put them under task order based on specific work that has a beginning and an end. Individual task orders, as needed. So to answer your question, three are not absolutely required, but that was what was requested by me to provide three.
That request was probably obligated by you. I have experience with other municipalities who have a rotating firm because if you get one firm, they can get all down and can't provide the service that you need. And so what I have seen in other municipalities who don't have their own transportation departments is they'll get a rotating pool, usually three.
So that will be, I'll shoot you a hand, we'll be rotating it.
Yeah.
One, two, three, one, two, three, just round, as you see.
So I gather that there are no continuity issues involved here because they're all such individualized projects?
There will be overlap, if that's what you mean, project to project. But yeah, the idea is one will be busy working on one project and another one will come in and they can, the second firm could begin that one while the other ones are working on the first one. So there'll be a constant overlap. So it should resolve conflict with scheduling and work requests and things like that.
Any questions from the board? Is there a motion?
Motion, I make a motion that we authorize the manager to execute the agreement.
There's seconds, Mr. Fierco's motion?
Second.
Motion to be by Michael Fierco, seconded by Jake Farrell. Does he favor, please indicate by sending aye.
Aye.
Those approach. Motion to adjourn. Under new business, our packages were greatly enhanced by the very thick Cyclane New York Building Number Three. Make sure we're available. Will you use that expression?
Oh, thank you. We have Cyclane SP two zero one six dash zero seven. Chatham One Development Incorporated, Chatham Development One Incorporated is seeking approval of Cyclane for Chatham Park Lot Three, Building Three. The proposal is to construct a one-story office building totaling twenty-five thousand square feet along Freedom Parkway just south of the Round Tree Way intersection. The parcel is currently vacant and is located in the Chatham Park PDD. The developer has included some elevations and also renderings along with the plans. They were sure to include one showing the night time look because there was some concerns over lighting, and this is what they included. The planning board considered the proposed plans at their meeting on March sixth. The board found the plans to be satisfactory and recommended approval in a four to zero. These plans have been reviewed in accordance with the town's applicable development ordinances by the appropriate department, and staff is recommending approval of the proposed request. Any questions?
I have several. Somewhere in this wonderful plan, there was an indication that the denuded area was four point oh one acres, but the project itself was only three point seven four acres. And I did not understand how you could denude more than what the project income. We have the engineers here, I think we do.
Good evening, Mayor. Board, Robbie Odom with us right now. With that, what we're looking at doing is we're also working, just to give you an update. So we're also working on the site plan for Lot Two, which is directly north. And with that, we're looking at bio-retention area that will serve both buildings. So with that, we're having the grades made outside, so that will be done with the Lot Two. So it is a, we divided this up when we did the subdivision plan, I guess, a year and a half ago, so we do have a parking lot in there, but we'll be grading more than that. That's the reason.
Is the bio-retention area of this building different from the one that is currently to the east of, to the north of Chatham Park's building?
We are, that's a great question. The bio-retention area that was built, that was done, designed before with the, that was built, one and two, that was also designed to accommodate this building as well. What we're also doing, that we're looking at additional bio-retention area that, for this area that you're talking about, is going to be just north of there, Lot Two. So the parking lot area from this building, some of, most of, most of it will go to the existing bio-retention area. The, we're also looking at having a combination of the bio-retention area that will serve both those, so it'll be a combination. But majority of store won't be going to the existing bio-retention area. That will just, it's per the original design.
So Robbie, I noticed in the grading plan, it appears as though some of the grading is encroaching into that existing bio-retention.
Correct.
So is that being offset by this other bio-retention area?
What we're doing before, when we looked at that, we just graded a three to one slope in there because we didn't have a site plan. So now we have this site plan, we're looking at, this is going to be a retaining wall there, so it will be, service area actually will be increased in that area, on the bio-retention area.
So that, yeah, the grading makes it appear as though it's shrinking.
Yeah, it's not.
Okay.
And again, it's, it's the same, it's actually large, but then we're also doing this additional bio-retention area.
On the ground, can we see the area in orange fencing? Is that basically where Lot Three is?
As far as out there right now?
Yeah.
The only area that's clear on Lot Three is the bio-retention area that we're talking about, right next to Southern Street.
There are a lot of lovely trees out there. The loveliest of which, of course, is right in the middle of Lot Number Three. Looking at the plan, I don't, I can't anticipate that tree coming through the roof of the twenty-five thousand square foot building, but.
That tree is located about where that building would be. We looked at that, I actually looked at a report again today. We looked at that over a year ago. We did a tree inventory report, even though it's not one required. Even if the element was approved, this Section Seven, Section Seven would not be required because this is more of your intense village type development. But we had a tree inventory report out there. Most of the area out there, as you probably know, is like a ten-year-old cut over. So you've got sweetgums, volunteer sweetgums, finds, what have you. We do have one significant oak out there. It's, I think it's like fifty inches D V H. As soon as we saw that, started talking about this site plan, we had arborists come out there, and we've got a report on that. It is, I've looked at it myself, but we have a certified arborist come out there. It is decaying, has cavities, and, I mean, it's basically done. And if you look at it, it's pretty obvious. So we have looked at that, we've got a report and documented that, but if you'd like to see that.
Well, I know that there's not a requirement for tree protection on that lot, but, according to the master plan, but the, I was hoping that we could end up with more than the five trees that are on Penguin Place. I mean, that, can we, can we save a little bit more, even if they are nasty?
Yeah, and what, yeah, what we've done is, I don't know if you looked at this tree save plan that we've done, and what we're doing is looking at this as a pot base, based on a pot. So this pot here, I think, is fifty-five net acres. So when you look at that, you know, there's areas in here that, and before I get a little bit deeper, but where, what we want to do is kind of look at the existing, I guess, quality of the trees out there. We have looked at, along the stories, have preserved some of the more mature trees down there, and that will be with the Lot Two site plan. But just because, you know, there's trees out there, but if you look at these, they're ten-year-olds, sweetgums, or what have you. So what we're more concerned with, at least on this site plan, now if we have mature trees out there, we're certainly looking at alternative site plan. But what we have out there was, with the ones that we do have, is what we'd rather do is come back and say, if we have a grade in there, we have a three to one slope, then we could come back and, like, for the element which we're trying to follow here, is you plant canopy trees, so in ten or fifteen years, you get these mature canopy trees, and that will be your tree save area. It provides, we're looking at, I think, seventeen, minimum seventeen percent, we're probably thirty percent with this pot where this is all set, with the tree save, or tree canopy area, I should say, tree canopy area. So we have looked at that, and we're looking at that and continue to look at that with the additional parcels there.
So when you come back to us with Lot Two, we'll see some more.
Yeah. But yes, and, but again, I would like to look at this as, we're looking at this as a pot basis, and we're providing that. I think we're seventeen percent tree save, not including what we're gonna do as far as tree coverage. We're already at seventeen percent at the moment. That's the only one to increase, that's each one of these sites coming in.
A proportion of that is in the, is in the stream back.
Correct, that is correct.
With respect to demolition debris, this is something we've talked about here on the board a little bit. I was pleased to see this being carried off and not being burned on site. And is that going to be the standard policy that is applicable there in Chatham Park? I see nodding.
I have an answer, but.
I have an answer, but, yes, that, I'll go ahead and answer you.
Correct, Mr. Wilson.
That is what we're looking at doing, is not, not burning, and we're looking at, we're actually looking at maybe trying to do something more, we can do some grinding, emulsion, every use and study, and haul into it like a L C I D. That's, we're, we've had discussions with staff for that right now.
Wonderful.
Keep it on site.
Yep, makes sense.
That's great, because the, the burning up further north on 15501 was a grill.
Yeah.
A little problem.
Yeah, we are.
We're delighted, okay. And is the, is the indication on the map, the hospice in the hospital wall still in?
No, you told me the hospice is Lot 8.
Yeah. It was, it was shown in the hospital, but, I mean, is that just?
No, it's, it's hospice, so it should not be hospice. It may be a mistake.
Okay. Other questions?
Mayor, you took all my questions.
I'm sorry.
You took all my questions.
I got it.
I would like, I would like emphasis or repeat or clarification on page C2 dot 3, early additional elements tree coverage area, not required for this section. Even sitting on all the additional elements review process, even having read those through multiple times, I just need a refresher, please.
Yes, the, Mr. Smith could probably answer this better than I can, but with the elements, if you, if you read in there, and we've got our, you know, 10%, then you're closing more than that with the tree coverage and replanted tree coverage. But if the element has language in there, I think it's section 7, where you're getting into the Village Center developments, that the tree coverage is not required on that. Even though it's not required, that's what we're committed to it on this. So it's basically where you're getting the more intensive element, the way the smaller thing will show in the elements, that this section 7 is not required. And that's, that's written in the element right now, so.
Well, it's interesting to see how it's manifesting. I guess my understanding of that particular section, my own interpretation of it was that it was going to be developed more of a density, as I had envisioned, like Southern Village, let's just say hypothetically, where it's very, very dense, very walkable, probably covered parking, or that kind of thing. I was thinking streetscape, I wasn't thinking parking lots. So I'm pleased to see that there is trees, there are trees on this stage, and that you're telling me there'll be 17% tree cover.
And that does not even include, you know, where we've got the streetscape. If you look at the streetscape, it's a little deceiving, because, you know, the, we've got the street trees within the right way, then we've also got a streetscape behind the right way. So you're getting probably 20 to 30 feet of tree coverage here, and these are, it's a mix, I mean, they're canopy trees, they're not, you know, they're not your understore trees. So you're getting, you're getting more than what's actually shown in that sheet. And that's the reason why the kind of elements written in this, it gives you the flexibility to do that, but we're saying, we're committing this minimum, but in reality, we're going to be getting more than that.
Other questions from the board? Father Bobby, Dr. Killian. Is there a motion? Motion made by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Dr. Wilson, for those in favor, please, by saying aye.
Aye.
Post hoc, thank you very much. Our manager's update is next.
I just thought, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the board, just a couple of comments. Mayor Portman Baldwin mentioned that affordable housing, focus on affordable rental housing, we'll be meeting on Thursday, March 16, in the Dunlap Classroom, here in, in Pittsboro, over on the county campus. I believe that's at 6:30. I apologize for that, breaking that down, is that correct? I have all of that. 7:00 PM. Yeah, 7:00 PM, sorry. And as, as Mayor Portman indicated, that is public, so feel free to attend if you're not doing anything on Thursday night. Also too, the Chatham County additional elements comments included as an FYI, you'll recall some coverage in our local newspaper about county approving quote-unquote additional elements, and I think obviously they don't, they don't have any ability to approve within our Chatham Park Master Plan process. But they did, they did want to, I guess, be on board with, with the new comments that they made, and will be formally forwarding those for our public hearing on March 27. They included those in your packet this evening. As I indicated on my report, there was some, some thought from the county manager that those may be modified and added to those. Apparently, that apparently is not going to happen, and what you have there is apparently what, what will be formally commented on from March 27 during the public hearing, so.
It is March, then?
Yeah, we have a public hearing scheduled for March 27. The, I will talk a little bit about Sanford, excuse me, I apologize, the sanitary sewer infoway, the I and I project, the slipline installation thing going on. I've had this sitting over by my desk for a few meetings now, and I haven't ever, but this is, this is what the inside of, of a sewer line will look like when they shoot this material through it. And so the substandard material, the old substandard material, if you can imagine that, will be out here, and the mist will be on the inside, kind of fortify and seal off all the weight that's on the inside. So, I don't know if Mr. Royal is still here, but I've been playing with this, it's fun for the whole family to do. But, so that repair work has been going on now. We did, we did come to our attention late last week, that, that there were, the contractor had left the streets in the East Cornwall's neighborhood a bit muddier than should have been. You may have received a phone call or two about it, I know I received one or two here at the, at the town hall. We had a bit of a disagreement with the contractor on when, when the streets should be cleaned. Mr. Potte did arrange for a local contractor to clean the streets before the weekend. So that has been taken care of. There still is some repair work and some bumpy streets out there that, that, where the streets were opened up in some spots, that will be followed up on and repaired shortly. I don't have an exact date on that, but we'll be coming back and tackling that as well, so. So that was, that was the latest on that. I don't have any word on I T S, I don't, I haven't heard anything, I don't know if our representatives have. I think that's, obviously there have been quite a few things going on with the P V A, with the Main Street folks, and so we will get to those, and we have them, and we're ready to go with those when, when we find out a location for them.
Mine would be, there's one location that the Main Street folks and the P V A could be confident that is a good location. Does it make sense to tell you that location and perhaps install one at a time? If staff is doing it, I guess, you could do it.
Yeah, the first one's always the, the funnest.
The order?
Yeah. So, yeah, if you have a, if you have a spot, let me know, and we'll, we'll back with it.
Well, it's at the Pocket Park, and we've got additional sidewalk width there, so that when you put this four-by-four box, if you will, in the sidewalk, it doesn't obstruct pedestrian flow. And you can tuck it right behind one of the great murals, so it's, it's really not in the flow, but I did as a, from all four sides, so I can give you a pinpoint location.
Okay, great. Good deal. So we'll get started on that, new sidewalk. The, I've indicated that, in previous reports, we did get word from, we did get word from DOT that C max, congestion mitigation, air quality, which is a pot of money essentially that goes towards the at-risk air communities, so to speak, to help with sidewalk funding. It's the same pot of money, actually, that, that helped fund the sidewalk over on the stretch on, on East Street that we did last year. There is some money available for that, but it would require a much more significant match than we had, than we participated on that project. That's basically because they have money left over, and right now, we're evaluating as to whether or not that would be a fit for, for the town on the west side, basically from 87 out to the community college. The, there's, again, some stop, if you've heard this before, some right-of-way issues, and some guy wires, and things like that, that always make these projects interesting. So we're working with DOT right now to see what administrative we would be involved, if we wanted to kind of make sure that we had our foot in the door while we tried to work some of these issues out. So that's what we're kind of walking through right now. I know the East Street project, I wasn't, I think there were some things that we learned on that, that we'd be applying towards another DOT project over by the elementary school. And so it would be my hope that it works a little smoother than, than the East Street project did, if we did move in that direction. But I want to make sure we're exercising our due diligence to see if there are going to be some prohibitive factors over on this side of town, because that's a, that's a pretty long stretch that we're dealing with, and a much more significant match that we'd also be needing to commit. So we'll have more to report on that. But, but I think the good news is, is the sidewalks that we, we have installed most recently over on 87 and Pittsboro Elementary School Road, I believe, are finally completed restorations, all but done on that. We did manage to relocate the sidewalk along Pittsboro Elementary School Road, and that, I believe, appears to be in good shape. And so then, from that, I'll, I look forward then to, to working with DOT and with town staff to see if we can make sure that we have crosswalks and, and striping and things of that in the right location, so that the folks that are using those sidewalks in those areas can do so safely. And not just in schools, but in the downtown as well, and I believe there, there is some safety, some additional safety funding that's available through DOT to, to at least help with sidewalk ramps. There might be some applicability as far as the, as far as the street crossings, and some of the safety enhancements on that front goes as well, so good news there. And then finally, I would also mention that the budget process, we're continuing. I have had a couple of conversations with the county manager on the revaluation process and the numbers. From the town's perspective, appear to be favorable. I believe overall in the county, there's a little bit of a 4% increase, I believe for the town, it might be a bit more than that. But we're also taking into account, we need to take into account, there is an adjustment process that will be followed, and so folks, in other words, folks have an opportunity to kind of question the evaluations, the reevaluation, and so the amount that I have could, could be adjusted downward somewhat. But I think, tentatively speaking, knocking on wood, somewhere there is some good news on that front, so that definitely helps with the budgeting process. The timing on that, at least from a revenue standpoint, was, was effective. And I believe, I feel like I'm leaving something out, but, oh, one, one last thing, the thing that I was leaving out. You recall at the last meeting, we did discuss, we did discuss hotel incentives. I think there was a request from the board that we look, we take a look at sales tax, sales tax projections, to see how that would match up with any ad verum grant, that if the town agreed, how, how those two, how those two projections could match up. The developer is going to be providing that. I spoke, speaking with the E C, E C Director, we're deciding how, how we want to go about that, whether we can do that in pro forma, and then previously, previously developed from the developer, whether we develop separate piece of information, bring that to you, and then, if appropriate, then you can go ahead and schedule a public hearing or not. And so that, that information will be forthcoming. One more time, I will tap out. You know, the floor for any comments, questions, concerns you might have about anything.
Did we have any feedback? I wrote to Representative Robert Reeves and asked him about getting a local build through in this current climate, and haven't heard back from him yet, but did, should we investigate in any way, shape, or form occupancy tax?
I have, I have not. We can do a little bit more work on that.
Any other questions for Brian?
I have just one, Brian. I know you said last week you may be meeting DOT regarding that road off of one lot that is State Road, or did you get any feedback?
Yeah, we're going to go ahead and, and put together the property owners on that, and, and put together a list of the property owners on that, follow up with them on, on the width, find out who it is, and then follow up with them on what kind of widths would need to be adjusted as far as paving, and whether or not they would be, whether they would be, I guess, amenable to doing that. DOT indicated, the folks from DOT that I talked to last week indicated that they believe there is money available to pave that road without the town having to pave it, and without the town having to annex it. Although, if that, you know, keep in mind, that is, that is jigsawed through there, so that is kind of a, you know, there are a few properties that, obviously, are not in the town, and so eventually, there could be some issues with that. But as of right now, we think we can get, you know, provided that, provided that the physical, basically the issue being more physical than anything, provided that they can get a paved road through there effectively, without kind of upsetting the applicant, so to speak, then, then there should be money available to do that. So we're going to keep working. I haven't heard anything about the sidewalk and powder stone either, I don't know if that was going to be the next question. I provided some information to the, the management company on sidewalks and powder stone, and so they haven't, I haven't heard from them, I probably can follow up with them, so they're, but there may be a request to assume control of some sidewalks in that area. There's a lot of information that I think we need from them, on the condition of the sidewalks, and whether they're in public or private property, of that nature, so if you hear anything about that, something like that.
Any other questions?
I have, I have one more. I was talking with Chief Griffin with Fire Department about a week or so ago, I understand that they had a meeting with some of the Thales Academy architects, or the Drawlins, and, and they're not going to loop that water system now, is that correct? We're going to have a dead end hydrant on the back?
Not to my knowledge. They, we didn't meet with them with Fire Department, but we actually have a meeting with Thales.
Fire Department met with those guys?
Yeah. We weren't there, but we're going to meet with Thales tomorrow. Tomorrow.
What do we need to do to get into our ordinance? Because our, even our town water superintendent has said a dead end hydrant or non-loop system is bad on our water, because it's not moving.
It's in, it's in our spec to loop it unless it's, they can prove to us it's not feasible due to property or, you know, something like that. So right now, our position is they need to loop.
Could you check on that to make sure, please, if you don't mind?
Sure. Yeah, we actually have a meeting with Thales tomorrow.
Okay. Now, I would like to really emphasize how important all this development, this loop system is to keep our water moving. I'm no water expert by no means, but it makes sense to keep the water moving and just have a dead, dead end pot or hydrant, that, that our people have to go flush and, and extra water.
Thanks. That's all we got.
Mr. Bruce Beck, on the, I'm excited to hear about the additional funding potential for sidewalks there on West Street. Just to clarify, that is West Street we're talking about, right?
Yes, 64 West Street, yeah, for 87, it's Community College.
It's just a typo, I just wanted to clarify. And are you thinking there might be? And are you thinking there might be potential for improvements to pedestrian activities north and south crossing West Street?
Possibly in addition to improvements that have already been made there.
That'd be great. And thank you very much for the upcoming agenda items, recurring feature on your update. I really appreciate that. I wasn't able to express my appreciation last meeting because I was sick, but thank you very much.
Yep.
It's very insightful.
Feedback's always welcome.
Very good. Any other questions on the manager's update?
I don't have a question about that, but just to talk, when Commissioner Farrell was talking about Thales Academy, there are a level situation where the grave, the cemetery, St. Andrews Cemetery, and that line, has that been resolved in reference today?
I've, I've spoken with Chadon Park, and they're looking at the concerns, and they've indicated a willingness to quit cleaning that portion of the cemetery to St. Andrews, unless there's a problem with that buffers or setbacks or anything like that. But our initial discussion was such that there seems to be interest in resolving that problem, because the property line splits the cemetery in two, and at the historical association meeting, we learned that there are over 110 graves that are well-marked, and it's a well-established cemetery for the church that is across the way, so.
Any comments on them, clear?
So we're working on it. Miss, are you concerned? Are you?
I guess I'm.
I guess you're concerned.
Yeah. I guess I'm.
I have to pad mine. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 132. Before we go into closed session, according to N C G S 133, is there a motion to take a five-minute press?
Move.
Moved by John Monnet, seconded by Michael Bioco. Those are the papers, please. Did you get my key on?